Welcome everyone, I'm calling the speaking to order, please stand with us. We have a prayer this evening for Alderman Gallagher. After the prayer, please remain standing to the pledge of allegiance. Alderman Jerome, would you lead us in the prayers?
Sure.
Good morning, Father Lord, we thank you for the chance to be here yet again. Lord, I want to pray for our friends in the Middle East, Lord, that you would help bring a solution to the conflict that's going over there, Lord. And that you would save the people over there, Lord Jesus, that are hurting, Lord, and help them to come to know you, Lord. Lord, we ask you to bless our meeting tonight and bless our city, in your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the visual, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the April second, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Go ahead, motion. Second.
There's a motion, Alderman Luke, and second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Alderman Tate.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is an agreement with Waste Pro for sanitation services. Mr. Dave Manley, City Attorney.
Mayor Board, as we discussed at the last meeting, with revisions that were requested by the board in Waste Pro, they did agree to all revisions, so the board proposed the first one being that it goes up to eight additional one-year terms. You saw the nine-day termination for convenience clause every one year, though, and the eight additional one-year terms. After the initial two-year term, it will be at both parties' agree. So essentially, you have a two-year contract with eight one-year additional options along with nine-day termination clause more than at least after one year. The, they're going to petition the board for changes in the contractor disposal sites. But what I'll give the board discretion at that point to determine how they want to treat those items in the context of the rate. The costs will increase by CPI at a minimum of three percent but a maximum of five percent. And then, like I said, they had the nine-day termination clause as well. That was agreed to. The remainder of the items in agreement have been agreed to and discussed at the last meeting. So tonight, we bring this for approval, for the mayor's signature, as been agreed to inside Waste Pro, so they can begin May one with the, and then on June, I mean, May thirteenth for the recycling.
So, we have motion Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing now, roll call.
Alderman Tate.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. And next on the agenda is a resolution for sanitation rate adjustment.
This was, we discussed this at a prior meeting as well. We advertised, according to the board's request, to authorize the resolution to increase rates up to twenty dollars per month. But it doesn't have to be. That was the average over the three years, and what the twenty dollars is where that number comes from. However, I think that the last time we discussed this, there was some discussion rather than doing it year by year. So tonight, we need to make that decision as far as the rates for that going to sanitation sometime in the next couple of weeks, because that needs to be pushed out on the facility bill. So bringing this tonight to see what the board's desire is with regard to the rates for the sanitation on the field.
I like that one, too. Second, we have a motion Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion?
We're saying twenty.
It says up, it says twenty.
Twenty, it says up.
Somewhere says twenty.
Yeah, so if we keep it at twenty, that's fine.
So we never plan that?
We said up to twenty. So that gave me all discretion, because I think the last time we discussed this, some people were wanting to make it kind of lower.
Stability.
Yes, so if it's up to twenty, how do you want to do it?
If we were to have it lower and then to raise it, we would have to go through this process again.
Yes.
Is it a vote or just a?
If you, every time you raise, you have to advertise, go through this process again.
I'd just say, let's just like.
You're saying it's been good for years?
Right, that's what it's typically be based on the three-year average.
What that is again, is just, it's what the true costs are, year one, plus the CPI average that's going to go up. It's just doing a three-year average and putting that in there, so you're not doing this three years. You're not going up each year for three years. You're putting in the amount, plus it includes the amount that we pay for our elderly citizen pickup, those food trucks that we run, and our labor. That twenty dollars covers everything. That way, it just gives you an even three years. But if y'all want to do it that way, it doesn't matter to me or anybody else. The only thing is that you are going to be doing this again next year, because it's not, if you just do the amount for this year, it's going to, that's not going to be enough to cover it for next year.
In the board's list, it's one five.
And it's, you're only talking about a dot, I think, even if you did that, it's, you're going to have, you can't do under nineteen, because that's not going to cover your first-year problems. So it's either going to be nineteen or twenty. And so, you know, my suggestion, again, whatever, y'all, y'all on the board, do what you want. But my suggestion would be, it's smoother for the citizens to go ahead and make it, keep it, keep it the same.
So we're pretty sure the twenty will cover the next three years?
That's the average, right, the average based on what's in the contract. But as possible in the contract, isn't it, if inflation was exceeded that, it could be higher, is that correct or not?
The inflation is capped at five percent in their contract. So it's a minimal three percent but capped at five percent in their contract. So the inflation is actually capped in the Waste Pro contract, so it can't go, so if we have like a seven percent inflation year again, they can't get that whole seven percent.
So the twenty is, the twenty is at the five, figure it at the five percent?
I think three, three, three and a half percent. Based on the current, just trying to be realistic, based on current inflation numbers that we have now.
The twenty dollars is a very conservative amount, like, I mean, it's possible it could be higher than that, but not, but not like.
And everything above that is, you know, accounted for, you know, replacement of cans, any other utility.
When being inflation, like, that's what Nick's saying, it's like, if it went a little bit higher on inflation, it's possible that it could be higher.
If you want it higher than the four percent, four and a half percent, it possibly could, but I think the way it's, the inflation's done, the way the average is done, I think twenty is right. But to your point, it's, it's, it's not likely, but I don't want to sit here and tell you it's not possible.
Even if it is, we could do this over again.
Oh yeah, you know, I think you're good for next.
I would rather adjust it once, because inflation is high. What I'm, what I'm trying to, let me say that. What I'm trying to explain is that we didn't go, like, exorbitant in the average. We took the three percent, which we know we're going to have, and just divided that over three years and added, the rest of it is real cost. So there's not a lot of fluff in there. I mean, it's going to cost twenty dollars a month over three years. Could be a little bit higher, but not likely, but that's why I was discouraging last time going to nineteen, because that, we know if you got a nineteen, you're going to have to come back and do it again. But if you do it at twenty, it could stay low, because that could be low.
Because you'll make, you'll have a little bit of extra this year, and then if you're three, you may not, and so it'll bounce it off.
So Alderman Flores, would you clarify your motion?
I'll make a motion for one.
Okay, that's correct. And then Alderman Wheeler, and second. All right, so we do, so not up two, we have a motion Alderman Flores to raise it from twelve to twenty dollars a month. Second Alderman Wheeler, is there any other discussion? Hearing now, roll call.
Alderman Tate.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, don't work up here, sir. All right, next on the agenda is a discussion of proposed ordinances for code enforcement. And just to set the stage for this, there's no action being requested tonight. Occasionally, when our code enforcement officers are on the street, they see certain things where they suggest that maybe we should tweak an ordinance, so they bring that to our code enforcement superintendent, who also then notifies Whitney, since she manages that department, and then Whitney brings that to my attention. So what we've done is put two things on the agenda for discussion. Again, not requesting action, but just two things that have been seen in the field that we want all of you to know about to see if we want to take action. This is, this is Whitney, obviously our plan director, and this is Victor Byrd, Victor, how you doing, sir? He's our code enforcement superintendent.
So I'm just going to do a quick rundown and then hand it over to Victor. There's two items under discussion today, and it's two items that I think officers as a whole feel like need to be at least discussed, reviewed, and possibly amended. The first one is, we've had some situations with items such as trampolines and things of that nature in the front yards, unsecured by a fence, able to be accessed from anybody, everybody walking down the streets. From a liability standpoint, we view it as very similar to what you have with the pool. Your pool's required to be behind a fence, behind a locked gate, it requires some liability insurance under home. This could cause just as much injury as somebody walking by, so the suggestion by the code enforcement officers was to make it seem as consistent as, well, the park pools, it needs to be in the backyard. It needs to be behind an enclosed fenced area that can be monitored and maintained solely by a property owner to have a trampoline. That's our first one under discussion. The second one under discussion is, for several years in the past, I think we've discussed this with this board as well as previous boards, but the definition and requirements that we're putting forward with permanent surfaces for extensions of driveways. Right now, it reads as impervious surface, which can be anything from crushed limestone, rattletite situations. They interpret it differently at the municipal court sometimes with papers and things like that. The request, the code enforcement officers at this point in time, is to have matching materials to use for what is existing and what is, you know, expanding into. So those are the changes we'd like to discuss, would like to discuss with you. And again, Victor's here, he's, as he said, he has the day-to-day operations, he can add a few more details, get any questions for him.
She basically described it everything in a nutshell. Almost thought she might have been reading my notes. No, I'm joking, she, she had everything down that we had discussed, and there were the concerns that they could offer, as far as the wording, as far as the impervious foundation. I know it's not supposed to be anything where water can leak through. We're just making sure that gravel is going to be okay, so obviously asphalt and concrete would be. But the code enforcement officers were wanting something a little more.
It's easier to enforce and easier to see if there's matching materials and things like that.
A little more concrete.
So a little bit more concrete. Obviously aesthetically, it's a big thing, but it's easy to go and do a top five for them to make a determination that it's compliant. I know it's a little bit less cost effective for a lot of people, so it's a point of contention a lot of times, but from an aesthetic and enforceable standpoint, it works better for both. So we're just here to see what your thoughts are, and we've already had.
This is just going to be affecting the front of the house, the driveway, next to the driveway, not the backyards?
Well, I guess, all of the Middle East could be both, because I know that in the code, that they're allowed to park a vehicle in the backyard so long as it's on an various, various surface, such as right now, such as blacktop or concrete.
So no gravel loops allowed in the backyards?
Has to be perfect, impervious, otherwise. I understand that, I understand.
I agree with that, though, because you know, like, you can have some people just grab like their whole backyard.
Well, it's not maintainable, I mean, everybody here has had gravel in some situation on their property. We just were approved, and it washes out, and it disrupts the laundry.
I'm guilty of it. I mean, I had a lot of trouble in my backyards, yeah. But when I had my gravel, when I had gravel in front of my gate, I did change to concrete because of what, how I interpreted the ordinance.
Well, and before Victor even got here, like I said, there was a big discussion with the municipal court side as what's considered impervious, you know, what is impervious is gravel considered, considered impervious. Well, no, because water can see through gravel. It can, you know, these can break through it. So then it was looked at as a crushed limestone type thing, because when you do put water on that to set, it forms up to be an impervious surface. Now to the point of, okay, but is that good street value and aesthetically sound? And is it, is easy to determine if right now, you have to do that, you have to look up, you have to expect to see if it isn't back the crushed limestone, or is it gravel, and it's just.
Well, you know, if it's in my backyard, I don't mind. I'm kind of like Charlie, whatever's in front of the gate is what I'm concerned with, as a neighbor. And that's, that's, yeah, that's the phone calls I've had is, hey, why does that person have to have gravel and the next person did concrete? You know, if it's visible, again, if it's visible from the street, if it's in front of the gate, you know, I'm, I'm okay, you know, right now, I would say, okay, let's do what we consider impervious, asphalt, it didn't have to match. Because I'm okay with having concrete and then asphalt side driveway, or vice versa. But as long as it's impervious, in front of the gate.
Does the ordinance, excuse me, does the ordinance say it must be impervious?
It's an impervious surface now.
Then the ordinance is, like, now, but it's.
Well, yeah, what they're asking for now is to go a step beyond it from impervious. It's to provide where it's matching, aesthetically matching what's boarding on site.
But if you look up, again, if you look up the definition of impervious, it says a material where fluid can't pass through, that disqualifies gravel and anything other than concrete or something. So what I'm saying is, the wording that's in the ordinance now requires there not to be gravel. It requires it to be gravel, asphalt, or concrete.
Right, and like I said, which I was in the discussion that started this, we changed it to the impervious definition, but this, what they're requesting now is to kind of go a step above and make sure that, like, if you have an existing driveway that's, you know.
You don't mix concrete.
You're not, you're not mixed, so if you don't have just a hodgepodge of parked surfaces, just like they're at your front yard. It's more an aesthetic.
I agree with that.
I agree with that, but also agree with the backyard.
Yeah, backyard, this finished in.
Yeah. I don't have a problem.
The only issue I have is with the backyard is you have an iron, an iron gate that you can see through, and then it goes from concrete to gravel. Because I've seen a house like that, they have those iron gates, because they, they open them, and it's right back there. If you can see from the front, it affects impervious.
Do you think impervious surfaces be consistent with what we're saying?
It says, yeah, it says matching, having floor, that's, that's.
But, y'all forgive me, I'm going to ask you again.
Yeah, yeah.
The definition of impervious, and I'm just, here's one, says a material where fluid cannot pass through. So my point is, if you've already got that the surface must be impervious, that currently disqualifies gravel and anything other than concrete or asphalt. So why do we need to change it?
We're just changing how it reads from the, from the right.
Yes, it's an aesthetic thing.
If they match.
Oh, you're saying that it can, it can be tuned, so you're not saying that you would allow, like, I'm getting a little confused. So you're not saying you allow gravel in the backyard and an impervious surface in the front?
No.
You're saying that they have to match, like, if you have an asphalt driveway.
Material, yes, so you don't have a hodgepodge of different materials.
Okay.
And I mean, to your, I know you said you didn't mind it, and there's some people that are going to be like that. This is your question now, that you allow some people to have an asphalt driveway, and asphalt goes up, and then use concrete to lay out.
I get you.
They have to, just very distinct contrasting materials, so it's, it's an aesthetic thing, and it's also a more enforceable attribute for code enforcement. So that's what we're asking, impervious thing, like you're talking about there, is it's in the books, we've kind of got that clarified. I guess that's more of a historical conversation.
I see what you're saying.
I, I don't mind being impervious in front of the gate, before you go into backyard.
Do you want to be consistent impervious surface or?
It's a, it's a.
Let's see, materials for clarification, I don't think. That's what we're trying to do, I think, what we need to say.
I mean, they're about to, they have gravel and asphalt about the same price.
And everything, because if now, you can have gravel, it's going to be a lot different than your asphalt side. But you also have, there is a situation in asphalt and concrete materials. And that's what you want to make sure that everything stays consistent and matching, because it's like, what we're talking about, asphalt runs down, and then there's concrete driveway, and why don't we go to cheaper versions? Say, if you have the black asphalt, again, it's, you know, pedal, sandstone, asphalt, driveway, and you have clear contrasting materials, and stuff, you may not have an issue with that, you may just be concerned about the impervious surface standpoint, we're covered on that. This request is just to have a better impervial, and a little less confusion when we tell somebody if they can or can't. You know, we get the conversation of, is it impervious, what do you mean impervious, I have limestone, I have gravel. This is saying, that's what yours is like, now you need to put that, okay, there's matching. It's just easier to pour it.
The, the thing is, if you open that door, you could get into, okay, what if I have broom finish versus wash finish? Concrete.
Same thing.
I mean, you're, you're right, it is, it's an aesthetic thing, it really is, it's a uniform design, impervious standpoint. We've taken it from a lot of other cities, there's other municipalities that do that. As I said, it's, it's costly, or so, I mean, it's, it's a place we're asking, and.
There's some homeowners associations in the city that don't, that don't even know about it. It's got, it's all everywhere.
But that'd be the homeowners association.
Association, not. I, I like the status part of it, I mean, if you want to do the backyard, but as long as it's hit, I don't. But I would rather keep it the same, consistent.
So, so what we've done in the past, like with the property maintenance code, you'd want to say visible from the street?
Yes.
But it could be a corner line or something.
Correct. Yeah, my mind.
So tonight, we're just trying to gauge, before we put something formally in front of you, just from everybody. Alderman Wheeler, you guys?
Yeah, but I'm like, I was like, I like the same surface, and then it looks in the back.
So you like it being consistent, visible from the street? Alderman Flores, you like it to be a consistent, visible from the street?
Backyard is back. Yeah, I'm okay with it from the front, I mean, I think, I think we can do that from the front.
Yes.
But once we get to backyard, I think we need to, you know, catch up to back there, and drive on the road.
Well, the existing ordinance is not just visible from the street, it's everywhere. All we're talking about doing is something visible from the street, making it consistent.
I do have a question, because my own driveway is, you know, I live on acreage. I've got concrete path, and we built a house, and it's.
I should have never showed Victor where I live.
I just rebuilt my asphalt, so I don't want to have to go.
I mean, if you.
Can we have somebody go see it on?
Yeah.
I know, I'm worried.
I'll give you Alderman Gallagher's address.
And you obviously have a grandfather, you have the non-conformant laws, and we can't go and retroactive the law. So everybody has mismatched there, but, I mean, just moving forward, we know this is what happens.
Well, mine looks good, but, you know.
Well, that's a bad opinion, Joel, but that's just.
I'd like to see.
No, it's a, it's a re, rewind, it's like this here.
I mean, if they're already compliant with what we allow now, and we've already terminated it, how can we retroactive, go back and listen to what happened?
Well, how's the code enforcement officer going to know what was happening?
Well, it's, we'll monitor, we can monitor liability department in there, what's been approved. Because they were, so when you, anytime you near, like, expansion driveway, you call it in to us, we go and make sure that you're having sort of a control ring, that you're not eating on the property lines, and we keep it approved, it normally won't, barely, you know, do that. But yes, we will send somebody out to make sure, a lot of times people, people, they add wider, the top storm drive score, or they have caused blocking the water flow, and streets and things like that. So we learned our lesson years ago that we need to go and, and monitor what's happening. So nine percent of the time, you're still, you're operating the acre line, which you can lay out once you get on your property. So.
So if we're doing that, this is probably the only zoning type ordinance thing, because you're, you're wanting, you know, non-conformant type stipulation to some of these. And it's only, I'm saying, like, you do, you have to have a, so many, like, borders as opposed to a proper thing, this code, like, this, the proper thing, this code is not going to have this. So like grandfather, non-conformant, that's an aspect to it.
So my thought is, and if we decide to go forward with this, majority of the impervious surface definition requirements that we talk about are on his side.
We'll let y'all hash that out.
We'll do whatever, we're just here to play the case, you're the.
You hear what we would like, we'll let y'all hash it out with good things.
All right, so again, just to give direction, I think I've heard y'all clearly, y'all are not concerned about it matching, and only what's visible from the street, visible from the street. And that was Alderman Wheeler, you agree with that? Are you in agreement with that, Alderman?
Okay.
We won't see anybody see. And then, y'all.
I'm in the backyard, if they have, still have the gravel.
I'm the one with a picture of asphalt or concrete, either broom or wash finish before, in front of the gate.
Visible from the street.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, well, that gives some direction on that one, and then, and then on the other, trampoline, often get on. Or some other trampoline is like, like, smooth pull wrist, the trampoline is the same thing, it's unsupervised, you can get on it, break their neck, whatever.
Same thing from a homeowner's insurance risk.
All insurance, yeah.
Yeah, insurance companies won't let you have a new trampoline.
Yeah, I had to build a fence as soon as I moved in my house, because I had trampoline, not because I had a pool, but I had a trampoline.
Yeah, so, so we can just give us some direction, all we're talking about is, again, making the trampoline in the rear of the property and behind the torrid fence.
Behind the fence.
I would be fine with adding enclosure as a mandatory as well, so, you know.
Not the netting.
The netting and enclosure. Go through, trust me, I would like to do it. Although I have a.
You have, just through, you're requiring, and the trampoline behind the fence, you have access to see the netting. I'm working on my issues there, so I think that's something that we would need to, we need to stay away from, it's more like, okay.
That's just trying to make you stay away there, whatever.
I think the same, same rule we have. I thought that, I would, see, y'all, y'all, y'all like that idea, okay? Well, then we've got some direction. Nick, would you help us grab that, and then we'll put that on the next, the next meeting, on the next agenda.
We're going to want to plan words, and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to plan words, and we're going to.
So the trampoline wire actually is part of building code and building.
It's like, is building, I guess, is it not?
It does not deal with the local thing, like, a trampoline. We can either drop it into the building, block, and code area, there should be a spot in there, and it's only, I don't know that I have a placement zone for it, but. Like I said, it doesn't address the trampoline, so it interests us, you know, pools. You may consider to that based on liability stuff, but it's not, a trampoline is something part of the code.
Because it's not real property, it's personal, it can be made, that's why it's not the building. That ain't your.
A quick question, I don't know if it goes into the same dimensions as far as a pool. I'm still new, I'm still learning, but to my understanding, the pool in the backyard has to be so many feet from a house or from a store, building, or anything like that. I don't know if part of that is so kids don't jump off the roof and into the pool.
Yeah, I don't know who's choking this guy.
I don't know if that's liability reasons or not, but if it is, I don't know if we might want to consider the trampolines to be the same distance as a pool would be from a fix, from a fixable.
Yeah, I can say that.
You know what, as you hear, look, they got parents. If those parents have got enough sense to move that trampoline away from the house, that's not our place to tell them. That's my opinion.
Okay.
I would just say that, I mean, really.
That's a good point, though, thank you for.
We appreciate that. I think we have any more questions?
Anybody got any other questions, man?
Don't go around long.
Joel, you want to, you want to report yourself already for anything other violation?
All right, thank y'all. All right, next on the agenda is amendment to the MOU, it's from the city, DeSoto County, and DeSoto County Convention and District Bureau.
This MOU amendment is, we've talked about in the past, but it's just an amendment, the MOU regarding the project of the Landmark Center expansion and the hotel, the amendment knows that DeSoto County will issue fifteen million for the project, and the DCCDB will issue six million for the project, based on the timing of the construction and the timing of each of their obligations. So tonight, nothing for the city to do, but since we're reporting to the overall incentives that we've been granted are also required, signing the limits MOU, so that's just the MOU, when you get down to it, as far as the actual funding request, or refunding additions by both entities, so tonight, just the authorization for the mayor to sign the limits MOU between the county pieces.
We have motion Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Wheeler. The only thing I would add to that, just so everybody knows, the key difference is, and part of this change is eliminating the parking garage, the, the other. We have motion of Almer Gallagher, second Almer Wheeler, the only thing I would add to that, just so everybody knows, the, the key difference is, and part of this change is eliminating the parking garage, the, the other, um, uh, development proposal had a garage, uh, this one to make the numbers work, they have removed the garage, there's a, uh, adequate land space out there for adequate parking, so that was the, the biggest change. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Almer Dukes.
Yes.
Almer Jerome.
Yes.
Almer Wheeler.
Yes.
Almer Wheeler.
Yes.
Almer Wallace.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is the resolution of intent to issue general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed twelve million dollars.
This was discussed the last four meetings with the bond issuance, so tonight is just authori, authori, authorizing the advertising for the resolution, resolution of intent, um, in an amount not to exceed twelve million, does not mean it will be full million, this will not exceed twelve million, this will then be advertised, um, in the, in the paper, also sent to the city development bank, um, for their records as well, so that, that, uh, the bonds, and if you have a hearing at the, uh, second meeting you made regarding issuance, and then after that, the, um, bonds can be, uh, unwritten and in, uh, issuing, if, uh, the money begins, so tonight is just the first step of authorizing the resolution of intent to issue the bonds, um, rather than for the hearing, um, at the second meeting you made.
I'll take that motion. We have motion of Almer Flores, second Almer Wheeler, three discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Almer Dukes.
Yes.
Almer Jerome.
Yes.
Almer Gallagher.
Yes.
Yes.
Almer Wallace.
Yes. That motion carries, the next, only agenda is a resolution for engagement with the general obligations bond issuance.
And this resolution will just authorize the engagement of underwriter, bond counsel, and then the FA, uh, which is me required by the, as we develop bank as well, so this resolution will authorize those, that, those engagements, um, for those entities, uh, for the bond issuance, and, um, will be also provided to the, as we develop bank as well.
So move.
Second.
We have motion of Almer Flores, second Almer Jerome, three discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Almer Dukes.
Yes.
Almer Jerome.
Yes.
Almer Gallagher.
Yes.
Almer Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is a resolution, excuse me, all right, is a work authorization for the stone and road display sign, staying cordial.
Thank y'all, this is, uh, authorization to start the design and approve the ZNI for the internal physical, um, and authorization for the mayor to sign the contract, it's not to exceed sixty-two five, and includes the technical, the foundation design and all that.
So move. Second. We have motion of Almer Gallagher, second Almer Wheeler, three discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Almer Dukes.
Yes.
Almer Jerome.
Yes.
Almer Gallagher.
Yes.
Almer Wheeler.
Yes.
Almer Wallace.
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you, next on our agenda is a resolution calling private property.
Do you want to make a motion, will you approve the, the private property?
Second.
We have motion of Almer Noots, second Almer Jerome, is there any discussion? Is there anyone in the audience that hasn't been interested in any of the properties who would like to speak? Hearing or seeing none, roll call please.
Almer Dukes.
Yes.
Almer Jerome.
Yes.
Almer Gallagher.
Yes.
Almer Wheeler.
Yes.
Almer Wallace.
Yes. That motion carries, next on our agenda is our planning agenda.
Yes, sir, we have one item on the agenda tonight, and it is a request, uh, to move forward, uh, with the new tax incentive program for a project at two oh one State Line Road, um, and people remember years ago, a tornado took down the old antique mall, Minnesota antique mall, there's still is a slab, which you see in the real photo up there, uh, there's still a slab on the ground, uh, no building, hasn't been there since I believe like two thousand and eight, nine, somewhere around there. What you have in your package is, uh, the application, and a description of what the puzzle is, it's a climate controlled cell storage facility, about sixty-two thousand square feet, it also has some exterior access, RV and boat storage, um, you have a cost estimate for the project, um, you can see it itemized on the page submitted, um, construction cost alone is estimated at five point, five point billion. Uh, in addition to the indoor facility that you see there on the screen, they have also indicated that they will be taking the remainder of that retail multi-tenant center and painting it to match the materials of the indoor facility, uh, so it's cohesive, um, I have also talked with them about, um, the condition of their parking lot, to make sure they understand that it's, you know, they're gonna be doing some work out there to get some construction, it's already a little torn up, it's, it's probably gonna get a little bit more torn up as they go on their construction, so, um, they're aware of the need for probably an envelope of asphalt on the top of it. Um, other than that, we have Mr. Bob Rogers here in the audience, he's here for any questions, or any additional information you would like, um, but it is an indoor development, um, on the revitalization area of town, so the tax incentive, uh, request has been formally submitted.
I'm here, I'm, I'm kinda looking at this, I'd like to see more landscaping and, you know, providing and creating over there, and, I mean, it's been neglected for a long time, it just takes, it needs to be updated some, and just with, uh, with a building that has storage out there.
Well, we don't have the amount of buildings, sir, it's out there, there's not many buildings out there, uh, what you have, um, yeah, what you have proposed right now is heavy last model, it's got a modern pill too, but you also have money scattered here, it's gonna be an E wall area, that's gonna be a base for base support, um, and then above that, you have an E V S materials type of material. Um, but yes, I do understand what you're saying, I, I have indicated to Mr. Rogers that there may be some requests for additional things, he's here to answer any of those questions, and exact, or say can do it, or whatever happens in that discussion, so I'm more than happy to bring him up, or we could actually talk to him over there, he had, he had a horse accident, and he had gone crutches, so I can actually bring this to him.
I don't think, uh, he's alive.
You probably don't need him, you have a good voice.
Are you, are you okay with? I, I can come up with.
You probably want to figure out.
Way to go, Charlie.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, you just couldn't leave it alone, could you?
Yeah, just don't put any gravel there. No problem.
We've got a lot of building insurance.
Stay on the trampoline.
Actually, I'd just like to see, this opportunity, I think that, do a little bit more, then put some lipstick on the pit here, I'm just gonna see if we can make it, and then.
Most of the time, that's a five point three million dollar beautiful building, just like that, I wouldn't call that lipstick on the pit either, but anyway, I guess your question is about lighting.
Right, lighting.
Yeah, I'm sure they want the security at their place to correct.
Right, I mean, this state of the art, you know, uh, Benny York, uh, forty years ago, when I was managing long, he was a client, he's been, he's a oral surgeon, but he's also a real estate developer, um, fourteen of his facilities, Florida, Alabama, Tennessee, Houston, uh, Mississippi, they, um, they're, they're first place, and, um, yeah, this is not a ground up, you know, this is, this is dealing with asphalt in place, a slab in place, but as far as landscaping across the front of the building, um, it's gonna be integrated into the shopping, uh, the shopping center will be repainted, so that you've got a white and gray pattern all the way across. The sidewalk is in front of the shopping center now, it'll be a common wall, like an L shape, and that, that, uh, service drive, the ingress, egress, all that is, uh, the parking lot, the big container, top coat, rest life, and et cetera, and, um, there will be, um, in front of the building, shrubs, uh, I think we can put it through it, and we don't have a formal landscape plan at this time, but, you know, we'll be working on it soon.
We, we need to spend now, like, uh, get some landscaping.
Oh, yeah, it's where I'm starting.
Wait, wait, has this company, I'm sorry.
This is not, no, we, we.
Yeah, this is just a tax incentive, right?
This is just tax incentive, right, right, this is.
Yeah, it's not going to be for planning.
Well, planning, the, the planning commission normally will not look at it, but this is just going vertical on existing slab, so.
So you're not gonna have to redo the slab at all?
Structural engineer so far is, you know, uh, you know, there will be some reinvesting.
I miss old mega market, I got some memories there.
Second, second.
No, it was mega market. Trust me, I know.
Second, second.
No, it was the mega market.
Well, so what they have to do, right, they're gonna, he's gonna work for me, and then certainly make sure when we're looking at here, it wasn't up, you know, we're gonna talk on materials, I'll have a little lengthy plan, and then what they do is talk back to you guys, activate, to make sure they honor all of this, and then we give that final, yes, incentives.
So tonight, it's just, tonight, it does, not just like an action, like, like, you see this on minutes, that this was applied for under our, uh, tax rates, uh, for western taxes, and so you get up to seven years of a tax rate on completion for the improved value aspect of, of the, um, project, so, and it's all to do, is, the notice, notice, the adoptions have been made, and then upon, upon completion of this project, uh, equipment notes, bottom, remember, we'll clear back on the board to officially ask for the tax rates for those seven years of the city taxes for the improved value, which is while under, I think, the code section, again, it's a resolution, we adopted the past, the western tax rates, uh, that's what.
Well, he's presenting, announcing, making sure, and if there are any issues, we just wanna make him aware of it, so he can go forward, and then I'll, what he says, what he wants to do, like we would at all together.
And let me just say this, we kind of skipped over, thank you and your client, or your, your team, for helping us redevelop original South Haven, so I think it's a beautiful building, I don't see any reason why a planning commission wouldn't support that, uh, that slab has been vacant for many, many years, Nate, and they, the old grocery store was, building was vacant for a long time, became a second use antique store, so this is a great use of the property, so please, uh, relay my appreciation for the reinvestment back in the city of South Haven. Sorry to make you stand up for a bug.
I hope for the given money.
So do we, uh, do we have, we get a motion to approve incentive, that's what we're offering.
Well, tonight, all we want is, is an action, you need to set it tonight, we're gonna come back, and once the bill's applied, and one thing we can set, we can make a motion, okay, that, that we, uh, accept the, this, accept the program, or we, all we have to do tonight, actually, is put it in our minutes.
Okay, so we're not, we're not approving incentive or anything?
Yeah, we have, Bob was here to present it, and then once it's complete, and we're already have no studies, we'll then approve the incentive.
Sounds good, thank you. Next on our agenda is our mayor's report, uh, the only thing, just want to update everybody, uh, Spring Fest is next week, so, uh, city of South Haven is celebrating our forty-fourth, uh, anniversary as an incorporated city, and we'll do that as a celebrating big, like we always do at Spring Fest, uh, we'll have the carnival, as we always do, we have a, Hosier, uh, is a sellout for Thursday night, so, um, I had to Google Hosier, I've never heard of them, but evidently, a lot of people have, and so a lot, a lot of people love that event, so expecting over ten thousand people there on Thursday night, uh, we've got all that coordinated with our team, uh, to be able to do all the above, our barbecue contest is full, uh, we have a waiting list, and we have so many people, uh, wanting to get, you know, we went, had some years in the past where, where we weren't always full, now, uh, we have a waiting list, so we have, we are full, packed to the gills, and have people wanting to get in there, so it's a, it's a big thing for us, and I just wanna take a minute, um, little information for everybody, this event will be Chrissy Faulkner's twentieth time to coordinate Spring Fest, so can we give her a. She's truly that person that, that, um, you know, gets things done, likes to stay behind the scenes, but make no mistake about it, Spring Fest, she puts that together, she starts that many, many months in advance, there's so many pieces to that puzzle, and every year, it's, it's beautiful and well done, so the city appreciates you. And that's all I have this evening, we'll move on, the next on our agenda is our personnel document.
They gotta make a motion, will you approve that? Motion, Dr. Fess, please.
I'll second.
We have motion of Almer Noots, second Almer Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Almer Dukes.
Yes.
Almer Jerome.
Yes.
Almer Gallagher.
Yes.
Almer Wheeler.
Yes.
Almer Wallace.
Yes. That motion carries, next is our city attorney's legal opinion.
Just had one guy that came up, um, just authorization for the mayor, um, which you, you didn't give it, but this is for, tonight, authorization for the mayor, um, to sign, uh, contracts for, uh, dampier performances in the fall, um, was not, obviously, that authorization.
So move. Second. We have motion of Almer Gallagher, second Almer Flores, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all the bearers say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose, say no? I just have a motion carries. Next on our agenda is our utilities building league adjustment document.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, will you approve utilities building league adjustment? Doc, you have to present it tonight.
Second. We have motion of Almer Flores, second Almer Noots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Almer Dukes.
Yes.
Almer Jerome.
Yes.
Almer Gallagher.
Yes.
Almer Wheeler.
Yes.
Almer Wallace.
Yes. That motion carries. Next on our agenda are two claims documents. Is there a motion to approve docket one?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve docket number one, uh, that's presented tonight, to conclude all the.
Second. On docket one, we have a motion of Almer Flores, second Almer Noots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Almer Dukes.
Yes.
Almer Jerome.
Yes.
Almer Gallagher.
Yes.
Almer Wheeler.
Yes.
Almer Wallace.
Yes.
That motion carries, on docket one, is there a motion to approve docket two?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve docket number two, that's presented tonight.
Second. On docket two, we have a motion of Almer Flores, second Almer Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Almer Jerome.
Yes.
Almer Gallagher.
Yes.
Almer Wheeler.
Yes.
Almer Wallace.
Yes. That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session. So move.
Second.
Second. We have motion of Almer Wheeler, second Almer Flores, all the bearers say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose, say no? I just have a motion carries, the need this evening. The needs are potential and ongoing litigation involving the city, economic development within the city, personnel, and information technology, potential purchase of real estate, and interdepartmental personnel, no action, is there a motion to declare executive session? So move.
Second.
We have motion of Almer Flores, second Almer Jerome, all the bearers say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose, say no? I just have a motion carries, the mayor and board will now enter executive session.